Called the town on New Windsor's work session for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Approval of amendments from the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four work session meeting.
Question?
Approval?
A second.
We have approval. Second, any comments, questions, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye. Those opposed, so carry. Grant spreadsheet, everybody has one in front, Mike, you're on.
Oh, boy, oh, boy. Take your microphone.
Or you can just turn it on and you can sit it there somewhere.
Mayor and town council, thank you for having me in tonight. I was asked to put together a list of current or recent projects or grants that we've been working with, as well as some of the more popular upcoming grants. There are literally thousands of grants, so if there's something special or some specific project that you would like me to look into, I'd be happy to do that. Starting off with the, I'm looking at my spreadsheet, it's the first tab is the recent and in progress projects or grants, and three that have been applied for are POS projects. One was for the Atlee Ridge basketball court, it's a half court. The second was for Sulphur Springs Spring House drainage, to do some repairs down there to get the drainage in order, and a little parking, parking area expansion. And the third one was for the skate park lighting project. All three are still in process. I did reach out to the Department of Natural Resources to find out the status on that, and they said that they have been held up, one of their core people has left, so they've been kind of catching up. I also believe there was something that was left out of the package, it was set for Carroll County, but they got resolved. So they're looking probably the July third for the Public Works meeting, it should go on that agenda, or should be there soon after, so we should hopefully hear something in July of these three projects. Main Street Park repairs, that's the one at Christmas Tree Park.
Mike, what'd you say, July?
July third is what Tiffany, Paula, what Park of Natural Resources had said, but she's not sure if that's the one that she's aiming for, but it's up to the Board of Public Works on when they get it on there.
All right, see, well, we can't speed that up.
Okay. Any other questions on those? The next one, the Main Street Park, the Christmas Tree Park, we did the gazebo painting. Wayne just got a quote for some electrical repairs that we are given the go-ahead to go with. That's the Community Parks and Playground grant, we've had that for a few years. That's the last part of the project that will have pleaded, and then I could submit that for reimbursement when that's done. Two oh one Maple Avenue, I just have it on, that is complete, that's the retaining wall that we did over there. That was another POS project, and that submission was done for the reimbursement, and we're just pending getting that back from the state. Dealman and Foundation Stabilization Phases One and Two, those are complete, and we have received our reimbursements for those. So we are looking to reapply for a grant coming up for some more repairs, and I've been talking to Neil and Gary about that, and we're ready for it when it comes. The portal will be open for that application, I was told at the end of April, early May. We'll have about six weeks till the end of June to get the application in the portal and ready for.
What would you, what was the amount we returned, about a hundred thousand?
I don't think it was that much, but it was in that ballpark, yeah.
Just make sure that we put that in the next grant, that we were good stewards of grant funding, and that we kept it under projections and returned it.
We'll do. I put the wastewater treatment plant in our study grant, that was an MDE Bay Restoration Grant. That is one that I know that, I haven't really been dealing much with that, I do have it on the list, but I know that we have completed that project, they've submitted the PER, and you guys have talked about what the next steps are.
Yeah, we gotta get together and talk about that, we got the maps and the charts from the county, so we need to sit down and schedule a meeting to discuss those, the determination of that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon future number, and get that dialed in, that's the next step for that.
Okay, any questions on any of those projects? All right, next page is the possible funding sources. I just came up with some of the more popular ones, they're broadly applied. First batch is MDE or EPA. First one is the Bay Restoration Fund Enhanced Nutrient Removal, which I just spoke, what we use for the E and R study. We can consider this if we want to move forward with an E and R upgrade, we're helping to fund that initiative. That is due, the timing on that is ongoing, so there is no specific due date for that. Sewerage Facility Supplemental Assistance Program, or its acronym is CW-SRF. CW is clean water, that's only for sewer projects. That is due every year at the end of January. They usually announce it at the beginning of December, and that can be done for a multitude of, in my notes section, it lists a bunch of different types of projects that you can use that for. They do do loans and grants, you're likely to get a loan, a grant from MDE, but you can just apply just for grants if you want.
Are they very low-interest loans, Mike?
Yes, yes, they are.
Like less than one percent, or?
I don't think they're that low, but they're.
Okay, let's just ask.
Next one is the State Revolving Loan Fund, or the Drinking Water SRF. That is for, recently I used that in Union Bridge for PFAS remediation, and we did, they did give a principal forgiveness loan for that. I know over here that you guys haven't had a, haven't had a report from MDE that's put you over those levels, but if it does, then.
Well, this is the one where we never score. We always have a good application, but because of our income levels, we don't even, they don't even want to talk to us, really.
Right. It's also due at the end of January, announced at the beginning of December. Next batch is for DHCD, a couple of the popular ones here. Strategic Demolition Fund, that's what we've used for the Dealman, and we are planning on using that again, as I mentioned earlier. And I did mention that the date is most likely the end of June, and it should be open the end of April, beginning of May for applications. Community Development Block Program, CBDG, that is for, we use that for College of Blue Ridge Initiative, and we also used it for the initial lead paint debauchment over the Dealman Inn. When I first got here, that's what we were working on. The town itself is over the median income level for a townwide project, but if we did want to target a project within a area of town that is below the level, then we could certainly do that. The applications are due by two P M on June eleventh for two thousand twenty-four, for FY twenty-five funding. The meeting regarding the application for that. USDA, I put this one on, I've used this in Union Bridge before for vehicles. They will pay up to seventy-five percent, up to fifty thousand dollars on a new vehicle for the town. It's a very lengthy and arduous process because it's USDA, anything you do with that organization takes a bit of time, but it's something to think about if we have a vehicle purchase plan, but it'll have to be in the future. And the last one I put on for this meeting was Department of Natural Resources, Community Parks and Playgrounds. That's kind of the largest subset of the POS project, you can apply outside of that and on an early basis. We use that for the Christmas Tree Park, we can use it for other park projects. The only caveat is you can't use it on anything you've used before within twenty years. So that's an option if there's something you're going to do regarding a park.
How many years can you keep accumulating community parks and playgrounds?
That's a good question.
What I'm getting at is the lagoon area, if we started developing that, even a walking trail or something, you know, maybe even blacktop, so that if we do redesign and add later, whether or not we could put two or three years together to make a, I think we, the one plan had like a one-point-one mile walking trail through the wetlands with a bridge and different things, so. But I want to say at least two years, but I'm not sure.
I'll find out for you, I'll reach out to Tiffany and ask her tomorrow.
All right.
Get your answer. I do know you can't combine it with POS.
Right.
We'll separate.
But we could do POS projects down there, just.
Yeah, yeah, basically you can't.
Can't use the monies together, yeah.
And as Mark was saying, this block grant, you have to do a income survey, and it's good for three years, and I did that at College of Blue Ridge. We just made the fifty-one percent. You have to be fifty-one percent low, low income. And even retirees that might be wealthy, it's based on their income, not their wealth. But if people don't respond, I think it's like three people against you on the numbers. So it's really tough to get that fifty-one percent anywhere in town. And we were lucky, had, we had to do that the second or third year, just from people moving in and out.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't make the fifty-one percent. I think it was right after that, is when they came back and tell us that we're now, as a town, over the fifty-one percent mark.
Well, we've been, we've been that, I'm sure, but that, those two streets, I forget, it was twenty, twenty-one properties, I think.
Sounds about right, yeah.
And the last one, he didn't want to respond, and then I told him, I said, okay, you don't have to, but if we don't get the grant, I'm going to let everybody know. He had a town hall next day, and we just got to fifty-one percent. Had he not, there'd have been three people above the poverty level, and we wouldn't have gotten it.
So we don't have any targeted small areas within town then that we think would meet that income level, and we had a project that we could target, there's just, I mean, looking around the areas of town, is there any area that we think we could even have a shot at?
It can't be on Main Street or High Street, because like Waterline Sewer Line does for the whole town. It's got to be.
Specific.
Targeted.
Project.
To just those streets, at the Waterline, one College and Blue Ridge, you only did it for Blue Ridge and College Avenue, whereas the Waterline on Main Street takes care of pretty much the whole town, in one way or another.
What about the bottom of Main Street, though, over here?
Lower, you mean the two-hundred block of Main Street.
The two-hundred block.
Yes.
Where William lives.
Well, we had talked years ago about the two-hundred block of Church Street and Main Street, so enhanced looks of some of the homes.
I think that.
You know.
Probably qualify, if we can get the surveys completed, I think that they would, they would work income-wise. And there was, a lot of those sidewalks need to be redone and things too, so.
A lot of the rental units are in your favor.
Right.
You know, so.
I mean, there's not a lot of time, June eleventh, to do the survey and.
Yeah. But that's, this is something that you got to start planning about a year, year and a half.
Next year or so, yeah.
If there's anything specific you guys would like.
The other one I haven't found an opening, the Senators Appropriations Window, I think, is closed. And because I was looking at just appropriations in general, and a lot of the senators from other states still have open grant time, but there are a few senators, I think it's closed, but Dutch. On their website, it doesn't have a deadline, so we were looking at, and I applied last year to, I think, Carden's Appropriations of one-point-five.
Earmarks or whatever.
Yeah, earmarks for the upgrade of the Wastewater Treatment Plant, because I think I put in one-point-five million, and then they came back, well, what would you accept? I'm like, well, we'll take a million. So I was hoping, but, you know, maybe now with Kevin's contact with the congressman, then maybe he'll push it forward. I mean, this is the first time, really, for two years, you know, he's been our congressman only for two years, so maybe he wants to see some money come out to Carroll County, so if you could look into that one. I never found a deadline on it, but there's also no portal to get into it either, so.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, and we already have the application somewhere, so.
That's, for me, that's probably the most money you're going to get is doing something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's that, what's that called?
Appropriations.
Appropriations.
It used to be pork barrel and.
It still is.
We tried, we tried to get it through Congressman from Frederick years ago.
Oh, yeah, Bartlet.
Bartlet. And he said, oh, yeah, come and apply, come and apply, because we always were told that our income level was too high. So Kevin Knoll and I stopped by one time, oh, yeah, I'll apply for it, you know, we'll see, you get some money. And his assistant would go to the Tony Town Business Breakfast, and I would see her every month, and I'd say, you know, you have any update? No, not yet, not yet, and I didn't see her for a few months. And I asked her again, oh, no one from the office sent you an email or anything? I said, no, what? Oh, the Republicans decided this year not to do appropriations. So always a little bit too late sometime, but. Yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe his office will, will want to put some money into Carroll County, since he's only been here for two years. Thank you very much. And probably, I think there's another one, Community Legacy, I think, that I'll be looking into, according to my sources, for the two-eleven renovations. We haven't gotten the numbers or anything yet, but I got an electrician looking into it, and a general contractor looking into it, and Cindy Stone said a couple of the grants, you couldn't limit it to just volunteer firefighters going in there. But the one guy that we talked to, I can't remember his name, we were on that call, but anyway, he thought the one grant, we would be able to, so.
Speaking of that, when I was talking to Cindy at the CBDG application meeting, Charlotte, Charlotte Davis, yeah, seemed up to talk about a couple of grants they have, she said that they might be appropriate for that.
One happens today, and that's for energy-saving appliances. And I think that's, that's a matching grant, but anything would be beneficial. I did a grant through them for the greenhouse for Springdale. So it was a pretty easy application, actually.
When we were down there, they didn't have the dates set yet, they didn't have, they had last year's dates in there.
They thought it was going to be open April fifteenth. So that's today, so, all right, thank you.
Did you talk to anybody at Preservation Maryland?
I left Nick.
A message.
A message, and I've not heard back from him, so. The one lady that I was very familiar with, apparently she's no longer there, I can't remember her name, but she came out multiple times out here, so. All right, town property, Gear Lane Public Works Facility.
One second here, I'm moving, I forgot to move a document. Okay, so just a quick background on this, at the previous council meeting, December twenty-three, Director Myers and myself were discussing the Gear Lane Storage, Gear Lane Salt Storage Building Capital Project, and the suggestion was made to look into having the property surveyed and a basic concept plan prepared for the benefit of the mayor and the council, and for planning purposes. So we put RFP together, we sent it to five local survey engineering firms. All the firms were contacted ahead of time, and all were interested. Proposals were due March twenty-third, and we received three proposals. So you can see the three bids there on the spreadsheet. As you can see also, the costs are all very high, except for one firm, which was Polak and Associates. He was the lowest in all three categories. I did reach out twice via email to Mr. Polak to confirm his numbers, but I have not heard back from him yet on that. The RFP requested lump-summed fees for these three services, topographic survey, boundary survey and plat, and then design and preparation of a site plan, concept plan. Other items and information were requested in the RFP, and really only one firm of the three, which was Carol Land Services, CLSI, provided all the information requested in terms of timeframe, what specific staff were going to be working on it, the pay rates of all the staff and everything, along with the other information. So they were really the only one that hit the mark on everything that we were requesting. But again, as you can see, the totals are pretty significant cost. For instance, the boundary survey ranges from thirty-two fifty up to sixteen thousand two fifty, with CLSI and BPR being pretty close there. The concept site plans, simplified site plans are all relatively close, with BPR being the highest, but then Polak and CLSI are only two-hundred dollars difference. And then the topographic survey ranges from ninety-five hundred to twenty-two fifty. So the difference, the boundary survey would be on the whole property down there. That, and that consists, as far as we can tell from County G I S, is two parcels. So what they would do there is go and do a meets and bound description of the entire property, calculate the acreages, stake the property out, things like that. All three firms did say that we would have to do our own title search and everything, so we could, we could work that part of it through, through you and your person that does your title searches. All three of them came back and said that was not part of their prices, not part of their costs. Topographic survey, on the other hand, is where you go out, and it would be a smaller area that we were looking to get done, probably about six acres in and around the Gear Lane buildings, and kind of over the courts and over towards the pavilion in that area, down towards that part of it. That's where you go in and shoot, the survey would shoot all the existing corners, buildings, poles, everything that's existing there, and then also shoot topography, vertical X Y Z shots to create contours on the property, so you have grading, existing grades on the property. And then the concept site plan is just the, would likely would be a, what the county calls a simplified site plan, if it's under five thousand square feet of disturbance, which we would shoot to be in likely be, you would get into a simplified site plan, and it just reduces the amount of agencies at the county that see it. As in terms of a full site plan, there's more agencies at the county to get to, get, it still goes through the county, and we review it and all that. If we get, when we get to that point, if we were going to build the, if we were going to build the salt barn, we would have to submit a site plan of sorts through the county.
Before you move on, Gary, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Is the county doing any kind of boundary survey, since they're putting in that stormwater management facility down there?
When I, so, good question and a good segue here. When I saw these prices, I knew that they were doing this stormwater facility down at the bottom there, so they had just, not too long before we looked into this, got concept plans.
They had just not too long before we looked into this, uh, got concept plan from their design engineer. They use um, a BAI, I think it's Brutus and Associates is doing the design for the, for the stormwater pond. So I reached out to the county contact there and asked that same question, is, is the to- to- topography shown on those concept plans? Was it field run was my first question. My second question was, if you, you can actually pull it up, um, if you go into the, the concept plans. Um, and go to page two and three, two is an existing conditions plan. Like you guys don't have that, you can pull it up on your screen, but it shows the actual uh, um. Uh, building proposed, it's not labeled, but it's a, it's where we, we had a, would be about the, the, the size of the salt barn. That we talked about putting in, they already showed it in there. Um, through our, I guess through our conversations with, with the county staff. Um, and also the, the, the stormwater facility, my other question was. Is it designed to capture all the existing impervious and drainage area in, in that area? And, and it is in addition to other, other areas, so that will help us when we go to do our site plan. Because we might have to provide what's called um, uh, water uh, quality. Stormwater management when we do it, but the quantity of stormwater management would be included in that facility. When, when that gets, that gets done, so that would save on some design and some, some costs for stormwater. So that's, that's what I was gonna mention as additional information. I mean, I don't, uh, you know, it's your decisions, I, I wanna get your input, but. I, I don't know based on those costs, you know, why not just use the, why not use the um. You know, the site plan, we can get copies, full-size copies from the county, they, they said they would run us some copies. We can, we could use it, label it, show, use it, you, show you all what we're looking at. I mean, the grading is very simple, it's all pretty much flat, I can do the grading on that, it's, it's very simple. Um, at least to get you guys something to look at and see where, see where things are instead of. Again, it's up to you, instead of spending that money, or that, that much money on, on a, on, you know, a survey. Topographic survey at least, now if we wanna get the, the, you know, exactly where the corners are and have it all staked out, then. That's where you get into the boundary survey. Um, we might be able to just down the road, just go and, and get into a concept simplified site plan. Which again, that's the cheaper of the three and they're the more consistent uh, prices um, from, from each of the, each of the vendors. So yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna mention.
What I would mention is, you know, what the county is doing is benefiting us, I get that. But we're also benefiting the county by having land there, we're giving land out. That could be used for other purposes, but it's a good purpose, well, not they wouldn't take care of everything for us.
Take in terms of. Well, it's actually, it's, it's, it's pretty much been done, that's, that's my point, not, not. We would, that, the topographic survey we were looking to get is pretty much the area you see there, maybe a little bit cut off at the top up towards the courts. But we know what the courts are and we know we're not really looking to do anything there. It shows, it shows the Gear Lane area, the buildings and everything. Um, it's probably not to the best scale um, that we would wanna see for a site plan. A site plan is gonna be a smaller scale, which means it's gonna be, you know, things are gonna be, it's gonna be like one to ten or one to twenty versus. That might be one to a hundred or one to fifty, I'm not sure if the scale's at the bottom or not.
And who, who did the county use?
Uh, it's, they're called Brutus and Associates, BAI is who they're using.
Would it be beneficial to contact them to see?
If we could get a different scale, yeah, that's something we might be able to do.
I mean, they are.
The county's very cooperative with these projects and stuff, I mean, I can, can't hurt to ask, like, I mean, you know. I, I just, I mean, that's a lot of money for surveying.
And if, and if there's something else that we need and they already have majority of it, then I'd say our cost is gonna be.
Eighty feet for the scale.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I can certainly reach out, I'm gonna, we have a um, a WRCC. We gotta get the acronym right, not the Road Runners, but the. Meeting is uh, next, well, I think it's next Wednesday, so, you know, um. Plan to get those, those uh, copies of, of these plans, sheets two, sheet two and three from um, from the county there. And I, and I can see if we can get a diff- maybe a different scale uh, plan from, from their, from their uh, engineer.
All these surveys Gary are just surveying what is there now.
Mm-hmm.
All of these, so none of these are yet having someone come in and look at that area and help us lay out that area. Right, this is the stuff that we need to be able to do that next step, the, this, this survey.
The only thing that they, the only thing that we were looking, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong here, but. When you say what we're planning to do down there, the only thing that I know that we're planning to do down there is the salt barn.
Well, y- yes, we, we know we need to do a salt barn, but when I met with uh, Wayne and the rest of the Public Works Group. We were looking at the facility as a whole and wanted to have some long-term plans. So that, you know, when we put up the salt barn here today and the size. That we know down the road that it's going to fit into maybe extending the next building that's gonna hold the trucks or whatever. So we don't have to do things twice, we, we wanted to have a long-term vision. Um, and these surveys, you, you know, we're looking at the whole property and then. Uh, at least my thought was that we would have someone help us, you know, meet with our public works guys. Talk about what we do, how we use the facility and help us lay out and plan that whole parcel for the, the future.
Yeah, so to answer the first part of your question, yes, so survey, the surveys, both topographic and boundary are to get the information that we. The existing features that we need. The site plan process is probably what you're alluding to, that would show any kind of proposed. Um, uh, buildings, and now, if you're looking, i- if you're looking to do the. I, I wanna differentiate between, you could get the, somebody to put together a, a concept or future plan, overall plan. But when you go to submit a site plan, a simplified site plan, you wanna look at whatever you're, the one building. Because then you're gonna get into other, other requirements in terms of disturbance and, and stormwater and, and other. And drainage and things like that, so we could get, we could get a concept plan, overall future plan like that. But it would be kinda two different, two different plans that we envision that.
I, I think that'd still be fine though, because then we would have, we would know the long-term vision. And then we submit one piece at a time to the county.
Right.
Which would qualify as a simplified, which I think would be better.
Yeah, now they do, I don't know the ins and outs and specifics of um, disturbance. They tend to steer you away from piecemealing development like that. And, and disturbance is cumulative from what I understand in terms of stormwater requirements. But again, with the facility handling that whole area, I, from what I understand, quantity would be covered. It would be the initial, the, the, the volume, volume would be covered, quantity, you do, you'd have to do a, a swale or a, a sand filter or something. Uh, they call them box of rocks or things like smaller uh, stormwater uh, methods to treat.
Because, y- you know, when, when we find out the price of the salt barn. We, we have to realize that we are not gonna be able to do that facility in one fell swoop, right? We ha- we, the town, are, are going to have to piecemeal the development of that whole Public Works facility. And so we really need to have that laid out for the long term. At least in my opinion, uh, so that we don't, you know, make an error in either building or moving. Or doing something down there that we're gonna have to redo in the, in the future. So I would like to see us maybe spend the least amount of money that we can to get, if we have to get two pieces done. That, that's fine, but I would like to have at least a, a long-term plan for down there. And, I mean, you know, I, I was fortunate enough to meet with the Public Works guys. And they had lots of ideas of how they use that area and what would be beneficial to have down there. And if we had someone incorporate those things into a long-term plan, um. That would help the council was, was we move forward with funding and.
Right.
Laying out the pieces to have it done, and then if we need one of those surveys to maybe tack on to something that county already did. Then we'd have to do that.
What I would suggest then is, is let me see what we can, what we can get in terms of a, a, a smaller scale plan. That, basically of that, um, and then I can sit down, we can sit down with Public Works and say, all right, what's. What all do we wanna plan for and where? Cause it's really, what, if you have a to-scale plan, I can do most of the time. At least from a conceptual stage to lay it all out and know it's gonna, this building's gonna fit here and this building's gonna fit here. Expand this building, where is it gonna be, it's just a matter of showing it in scale.
You, you know, and I know Public Works Director Myers was, was, you, you know, had the long-range visit of even. You know, do we need to consider entryway into the lagoon area for future ball fields? Or whatever may end up being back there, that all needs to be taken into consideration now as we're laying out that, that footprint.
Right, see that, that's the, kinda the, I don't know how much is cut off on that plan that you see there. Um, but that, you know, does not, you do, you do not, you don't see the whole length of Water Street. Where you would bring possibly a, a, an access road in.
Right.
You know, next, like where, with the, next to the pavilion and stuff, so. Um, let me see what I can find from there first before we, before we uh, take the next step, I think. If we can get ahold of something to look at and, and, and at a better scale and, and lay things out, I think that's, that's the next step.
The stormwater facility, um, how many acres is that, you know?
The facility?
Well, the, you got, well, the one, I guess I'm looking at the right one that has like two, two ponds or.
Yeah, the one turn, can you, yeah.
Zoom out.
The one on this. Um, yeah.
Page three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one, yeah, I don't know if there's uh. Information on the size, there's probably volume calculations, but I don't know if there's gonna be acreage calculations. I'm not sure.
Drainage area.
That's, that's what's getting to it, um, I can, I can find out. I mean, it's designed, eh, size-wise and grading-wise, depth-wise, horizontally and vertically is designed to capture the drainage area getting to it.
Right.
So.
This seems a little bit more than what I.
Yeah, it's, it's bigger than I thought it was gonna be.
Had originally anticipated.
So I think that's based on the volume of water that it's gonna take, which is pretty much Lampard Maple Church. I think they probably had to recalculate, the other thing it does is, it kinda protects us as the town. Because if we had to put in a stormwater facility for Gear Lane, specifically because of the MS four permit requirements. Uh, with the, with the salt storage and things like that, that would be a pretty state-of-the-art facility just to contain. That runoff within that facility itself. Um, the other thing, I guess we can ask the county is if their limited disturbance is. If you're, you know, they're ninety-some percent done as far as their limited disturbance, because that's gonna affect our overall footprint. And where we could shift buildings and all kinds of things like that, so um, the preliminary part of this. This, this plan is, is relatively good, I think we could save some money by kinda going off of this. If town manager Di can get the smaller scaled plans from the county. Um, and then kinda gear it towards more our conceptual plan. Um, but with, with this particular plan here, it really helps us with some of the grading challenges. Uh, the, the dumpster area, the walls, the changes in elevations, because if you've been down at the site, um, dropping off yard waste. Or for bulk trash events, you can clearly see that there's many different changes that are happening. Uh, hence I think why um, um, everyone wants to see the concept plan. To see how it fits the needs of our department, um, because it's a major investment.
Okay. Do you need anyone in town property? Got it covered?
Yep, I'll work on, I'll email Janet tomorrow, I might, what I might try to do is set up a meeting with her, we, and have her come out and talk with us and. Show us what we're looking at, we've done, we've met them once or twice before already. So uh, they're very uh, accommodating in terms of coming out and meeting with us and stuff, so.
Untagged unlicensed vehicles.
All right. Got the mic?
Is it on, do I have to turn?
Yeah.
You have to look for the green button.
Is he buttoning on? At the hole, yeah. Yeah.
Yep, that looks green.
Okay, so um, I do have the final, well, my, the last review that I did, that I need to get approved by Michelle for the citation. But um, if that is the final review and we don't need any more changes, then we'll have the whole entire process in line. Um, and right now I'm looking to send out two violations to start, um, trailers. One, I can't get a confirmation on the tag, um, Deputy Guinness said it didn't return it, owner information, so. Um, I can't move forward with that one at this proper moment, cause I can't.
Yeah, I have no idea how to do that.
Who to address, the, address it to, I'm not sure who the actual registered owner is and that's who we would have to go for. Um, so, that's the update that I have, and once I get the citation finalized from Michelle later. Um, we're going to send the letters out, I just wanted, I know that the citations have to be hand-delivered.
Do they? Well, they don't have to be hand-delivered, but if they're not hand-delivered, they have to be picked up through the mail, uh, and so that's.
We send them certified, is that gonna be sufficient?
Only if they're picked up.
Okay.
See, that's the, the difficulty is frequently they're not picked up, that having been said. That sometimes is the easiest way to start, because, you know, a lot of people do pick up their certified mail. And I always advise that if you're gonna send something certified as, as a start before you have to get the deputy to come and, you know, knock on people's doors. And is your mom a home and that kinda stuff, um, you also send it. And we, we talked about the citation, I think that we're in good shape with that, um, but you also send it regular mail. Because if it's regular mail and it doesn't come back as undeliverable. If down the line, let's say that someone completely eludes service. They just, they won't, you know, you, you know that they're in there, you see the curtain open and that kinda stuff. Uh, there are means to get around that, but you have to file back an affidavit with the court. That shows this is what we've done and, and this is the circumstances that um, indicate eluding service. And one of them can be, we sent it, no, certified was not picked up, but the regular mail was not returned. Which indicates at one of many different things, so it's another, whatever ridiculous amount it is now, a mail something sixty cents. But it's only sixty cents, so it, it's worth doing, but. Somebody, you either have to, you have to serve it according to the Maryland rules, so it either has to be sent certified, restricted delivery. So that you know exactly who it was delivered to and not just, you know, the, the nine-year-old and, uh, signs for it. It has to be restricted delivery, that's in the code, it has to be hand-delivered to the person. Or it has to be delivered at the person's address and left with the person of um. Suitable age and discretion or something like that is the line, so you can't leave it with the little kid. You, and you can't leave it with the babysitter, cause it has to be somebody who resides there, unless the babysitter resides there. Um, so there's all kinds of things that have to be dealt with, that's one reason why I always like to start with certified mail if you, if you can get them to come pick it up.
Yeah, I'll send it both ways to start.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what about actually posting on this trailer that I can't get the owner information on?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, and I don't know off the top of my head, but it's easy enough to find, cause I can picture on the page exactly where it is. Cause for some property things, you can just post.
Can't we just tow it?
Huh?
Can't we just tow it? We have a vehicle on the street.
You can't just tow it, now.
We can't figure out who it's registered to.
You, you gotta go through the steps to make sure you can show that you don't know who it's registered to. So there are, you can't just say, oh, I don't know who it's registered to.
I get that, but we've already taken steps, the deputy?
It's tagged.
It is tagged, it has a main. It's, it is tagged, it has a main trailer tag.
Ah.
Uh, and with my long experience.
Where have I heard that before?
No, they do not always come back registered in the system, registered to an owner, because they're more for commercial personalized use, so.
Or people who don't wanna pay Maryland fees.
That too.
Or somebody that has a friend that has a main tag.
So it does have a registered owner, they probably live right there at the address and I figure if they catch me posting on it, then it'll come out and then I can confirm, so I just kinda.
And then you can hand it to them, yeah.
So that's how it's kinda played that way, with the weather getting warmer.
Yeah.
Could just post something on it, just to say like, hey, this is in violation and whoever owns it's gonna come out and say, see it.
Yeah.
Like, if I'm looking, if I'm outside of the car and I'm looking at their vehicle, they're gonna probably say.
Yeah. Who are you, so have a, have a copy ready of the citation.
Yeah, so that, I figured that's the way that I could go with the weather breaking and stuff and just try to do it.
Well, if you can, if posting it on the trailer brings them out so that you can then confirm that they are the owners, is yours? Yes, puff, it's like they always do in the old movies.
Stakeout for twelve hours.
But is that, no, that is, is legitimate. I just don't know that posting, like, sticking a thing on the trailer without any interaction with a human. I don't think that is adequate by itself.
Right.
Unless it's like a property, real property, sometimes you can post, but I don't think movables count.
All the issues with these two trailers are going on how we bring them to the most traveled portion.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's something to have, I have two for certain registered, um, in that area for trailers and then the citation, so that's where we're at. That's my.
Making progress, yeah, yeah, well, we, we've been chatting, well, not chatting, but.
What are we going, what are we, what are we, um, gonna pursue after these?
Well, oh, I, I don't know, what else, what else is next?
Well, I mean, the most, the majority of everything else is on, technically on private property. Um, so, we can't take it from private property, we could probably email our mail letters.
Yeah, that would probably be the next step, but.
Okay, that, that's what we've gotten complaints about.
Yeah, so I'm probably gonna go for the ones that are like visibly disabled or have not moved in a significant amount of time. Because there's some that have plant matter growing through them, um, and.
Which is an indicator.
The letters with that, because then I can take the citation and move forward, revamp it for that violation.
Yeah, that's a different section of the law.
Yeah, and then go, move forward with citations for that and then hopefully people will start cleaning their stuff off their private property since we can't take it. And that's my next step.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Do you like a public information, uh, announcement for the town?
Yeah, I think what we got is something like in the newsletter or something like, say that we're really cracking down on it.
Or posted.
They start acting prior.
On the website and, and Facebook too.
Yeah, because. I have a, I have a couple that I'm like, it's not really in violation, but it's just an eyesore.
Yeah.
And it's just things that I'm like, come on, you know, this is ultimately. An eyesore is really iffy, as far as what an eyesore is to you versus.
No, no, there are things that are just objectively eyesores.
I think you're also, I think you're also gonna have an argument where a lot of these vehicles are either back on like the, the untraveled alleyways. Or like where people use them as extra parking back there and a lot in most of town. And you're gonna get that defense too, well, it's back here, nobody can see it, Main Street's clear, you know, so it's gonna be interesting.
But maybe in connection with this whole beautification day thing that everybody's all over now. I, I'm going to also be out of town, I don't live here, that's, that's okay. Um, is to, is to put out a pitch, not just, we're cracking down.
Yeah.
Kinda from you, but from you hail fellows, well met. Uh, we really, we really wanna beautify our town in this, loo- look at you, the car that's got the flat tire that's been in the driveway. Yeah, it's in the driveway and it's titled, but it's got two flat tires, fix the tires.
Sure.
Um, you know, if that, that's just a thought, you know, as part of that pitch, if you're gonna pitch, I, I know you said you were, you were watching to make sure nobody talks smack.
Right. No, but, but there's, there's gonna be from Mount Airy, I think.
Well, they're that way.
But, not to interrupt you, but, um. You're, you're talking about definite violations that you can visibly see, correct? The next step, but we still are, are gonna have the other issue of under tarp, under, can't see, can't tell.
I don't think that's an issue, Mister Mayor, I think they're under the tarps. And unless you're going to go and get warrants from the, a court that authorizes you to lift the tarp. To see if the car is registered.
Can we send them a letter, a nice letter, stating that, um. We would somehow like for you to, if we are looking at all properties for untagged uninsured vehicles. There are vehicles on your property that if you would notify the town by. May thirty-first with verification that it is tagged and titled, we would greatly appreciate it.
And you, you'll get, a lot of people will respond positively and other people.
Will ignore it, but if we put a date on there, by, maybe it sounds like.
It does sound maybe a little more official. Now that we've told the world, that's what we're gonna do.
Someone probably aren't listening, so.
No, you can al- you can always write a letter to your citizens and say, we're working on, um, this is an issue in many places. And your property, you know, appears to have four cars in the back along the alley. Uh, we'd appreciate any information about the status of your vehicles, but.
Well, it doesn't also, it doesn't have to go against the unli- untagged vehicles statute. You could go after the nuisance as well, because these, we're not talking about car covers, you know, that are just gently, you know, a nice car cover. We're talking about a tarp with some holes in it and you could see the rust underneath.
If that is the circumstance, I think you're in better shape. If you're talking about somebody who for many years has had many small cars parked behind its house. Think that is just a war, uh, just move along. But if you've got something that fits under the nuisance thing, then that's what, we've talked about going there next.
The problem is that it applies to numerous sections of the code. From nuisance to property maintenance to unregistered, un, un, um, unlicensed vehicles.
Yeah.
Like, there's so, you could hit.
Yeah, well, you write a blunderbuss letter.
And that's what we talked about on the letter, we could put.
Put, you know, you're in violation of four different provisions.
Right.
Of, of the code. Maybe we start with you maybe in violation with the nice.
So the other.
Well, yeah, the, the.
You're slightly in violation. The carrot and the stick.
The code that say that they can get, they can get a request for five days or they can get a.
Yeah, there's weird things in there.
They can get a, an operable vehicle license, like, so there's all these other things that we should be doing on our.
Prepared to do.
If, if they go and actually read the code and find out that they can do those things and that's what we don't have in a line.
Yeah, that we don't have that pro- cause I know we've talked about that.
Since we're all these codes, we don't have the process.
So that's the next conversation.
So it's like, that's what it always comes down to, it's like, I, I don't know if the process was never like carried out.
Things, things haven't been updated always.
Well, yeah, but that's.
But I think that those things in the code, because I did go and review the code and, and, you know, it would not be hard for the town to come up with a. To give them a five-day permit or a thirty-day permit to work on their car and we just need to keep track of that, say, okay, your five days are up.
Address, so.
Citizens of the town should not have to live next to a house that is filled with these kind of vehicles and making their property unsightly. They shouldn't have to sit on their back porch and see all this stuff just because it's under a tarp and, and hidden. That's, we have many things in our, in our town code that should take care of these things and we need to do that. I live by the post office, y'all know, and people talk to me all the time about these things. And they look at me like, are you gonna do anything, Dave? And Dave's gonna do something, so I'm gonna, I, I, no, I'm gonna push, I'm gonna push, we need to do something about this stuff. I'm in this seat for another two years, okay, and if they don't like it, in two years they can say something. In the next two years, I'm pushing and we're gonna try to clean up this stuff. And I'm on record, that's it.
And I think I mentioned this before at the, at one meeting, but the residents hearing what we're trying to do are very appreciative. They really are, so we just need to, like Dave said, keep on top of it.
And, and it could be innocence, I mean, somebody could park it back there, you know, times got rough, they, they parked it back there, a year, two years went by. But now that they see it, they might just decide on their own to do something about it.
Yes.
We can hope.
Start with that, right, right. Well, we're gonna, we've been talking about this one particular type of violation, maybe you and I can talk about those, the other things that are processed. I'll, I'll look to, that are process-related that we have a concern, we don't have a process for.
Yeah.
And, uh, we need a process. Also, maybe should be changed, like, there's one or two that are like five dollars, nothing should be five dollars. Can't get a cup of coffee for five dollars.
I think a fifty-dollar violation for someone is cheap.
Yeah, uh-huh, but, well, yeah, but this is New Windsor, we don't wanna get carried away. I mean, we want people to still be happy here, we just want them to be cooperative here.
People will take that as an initiative to clean up, it's not like we're trying to get rich off of people's violations. We're ju- we're just trying to push them along to clean up their property.
Alright, thank you everybody for your input. Anybody have anything else? Beautification Day, yes, we've been challenged by Mount Airy Mayor and, uh. Hopefully we get a lot of volunteers out, but that's also bulk trash day, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So, give me a total of tonnage on that, that will add up to our total real quick, so.
I got some tonnage I'm gonna bring down.
But, uh, the mayor of Mount Airy wanted to. Cause I think Westminster has a beautification day, Manchester might be the week before, I can't remember.
Where are we seeing Westminster's beautification day?
And a little bragging rights maybe and, and, uh, we may not have a high number, but we'll look at the number percentage wise.
It needs to be per capita or something like that, yeah.
So, so come out if you can, and that's open to all residents of New Windsor. Students can get their volunteer hours, so come out. Wayne, you're gonna be around?
I will be.
Alright, if you need a driver for trucks, if you're gonna be down there or something, you know, supplies, mulch, whatever, let me know. Alright, anybody have anything else? Here a motion for a German.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Well, there's a famous thing about him saying hi. Thank you everybody for your input.